It's good to be back. Vacations are so nice, but they are nice to get back.
Yes, nice to come.
Other than, like I say, it's a forty drive from California. It's a long fall.
Go ahead.
We will call the meeting of the Breezy Point Planning Commission to order approval of the three fourteen seventeen minutes.
I'll move that we approve the minutes.
You wear a good diaper, I wasn't here.
I wasn't either.
Oh, okay, I'll second anyway then.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that motion? Done. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote is the same. Motion passed. City Council A is on report. Councilman Maroney did not make it tonight. Joe?
Sure.
Do you want to give us an update?
Sure. We had a presentation of the 2016 audit. All is well. We spent a little more than the budget this year, primarily because we have the grant for the north street public access. Sheriff's representative was here just talking about a few items. Moving down to IT service contract with NJPA. We talked to them about managing our IT system. They can save us at least $1,800 a year, so we're going to switch from our current contractor of CW Technology and move to them as of first of May. Sunday liquor was adopted. Starting with July 2nd, it'll be okay for off sale on Sundays. The animal shelter contract, we currently contract with Heart on a monthly service for animal control, and we canceled that contract. We'll be using Babinski's Foundation Animal Shelter, which is in Pequot Lakes. I think it's on Highway 29. It's free. You can drop off animals, or you can adopt an animal for free. They will take care of the animals at no cost to us, and so it didn't make sense. That saves the city about $2,800 a year. And then we approved the fire contract with Pequot Lakes. The contract amount, as I recall, was a little over $86,000.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions?
One. Is that Sunday liquor thing, is that kind of a statewide deal now because of the Super Bowl coming up?
I don't know if it's got anything to do with the Super Bowl. They've been talking about it at the legislature for probably three, four years.
Now there's a push.
Well, there is a push. I mean, when you think about it, North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, and Wisconsin all have Sunday liquor sales, and so it was time.
And we have to do that individually by cities versus the state law?
Well, state law makes it available to cities, but our ordinance is prohibit sales on Sunday.
So we have to individually do it too?
So I had to remove that language.
Okay.
Just off sale. We already have Sunday liquor on sale.
Okay, yeah.
It has nothing to do with the Super Bowl, that's just off sale. Why off sale on Sunday?
Yeah, but I think there'll be some off sale to it, that game, but you're right. But I know that was part of the push.
Sure.
Okay.
The only off sale is the corner, right?
Yep, right now. Well, actually, almost all the bars carry an off sale license.
Billy does too.
So you can pick up a six pack or whatever on your way out the door.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is open forum number one. And I presume, Joe, have anyone interested in speaking in open forum number one? So we will close open forum number one and move to legal description. Correction of the Breezy Point Resort M&amp;H Complex. Joe, would you be willing to review your email to us?
Yeah. As you remember back in, well, some of you, 1308, the resolution was adopted on September 10th of 2013, and it provided for conditions for the conditional use permit for that facility. One of the conditions was that they had to replat the property. In replating the property, they changed the legal description, and when we went to record that legal description, it was no longer valid. And so this just basically makes a reference to that past legal description and the new legal description, so we even record the conditional use permit.
Would entertain a motion regarding that resolution.
I have a question first. Where is this property?
This is the laundry facility in the dorm.
Oh.
That's why I gave you the O8, so you could try to figure it out.
Three foot trees, and we're supposed to be six feet tall.
Yeah.
That's the one.
Any questions? Someone be interested in making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it as presented by Joe.
We have a motion, we look second.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Discussion of that motion. Any discussion? You know, if not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote is the same. Motion passed. This is general pass.
Yep.
Roadway vacation request. You want to?
We're on a jury, right?
Go ahead.
Okay. We received a petition for a vacation of a roadway along, well, it's the extension of Channel Drive.
This is Hilltop Drive here. This is Ivy Campground. Channel goes up to here and connects to Hilltop Drive. The petition for the vacation is a little piece, but sixteen and a half feet wide by, I don't remember the distance.
Two hundred and some feet.
Two hundred and some feet. Property owners blocking it, petition. The majority of the property owners.
And basically, they'd like to have that vacated so it can no longer be used by the public. They have issues with people wandering down that right of way and not knowing who they are or what have you. And so the council accepted the petition and met the minimum requirements for petition, called the public hearing. Public hearing will be May 1st, and in calling for the public hearing, they asked for the planning commission's recommendation. And so we would like you to discuss that, and I provided you with a resolution, a draft resolution for your use, but in using that resolution, you need to state reasons either for or against that vacation. Peggy did submit a comment to us. She said, "I believe it is not in the best interest of the citizens of Breezy Point to give up any access to the lake, which is public waters as defined by the DNR. Vacating that road would benefit only the residents immediately adjacent to it, as no other persons would be allowed access to the lake via that avenue." And so that's her comment, and we just need your comments and where you'd like to go with this issue.
Comments?
I drove up there today, and, yeah, I mean, it would be nice to keep it. Once you give it up, it's given up for good, right?
Yes.
But what are you using for? You're not going to put a landing in there, are you?
Well, I don't anticipate that, but who knows 100 years from now what they do with it. The DNR had mentioned that the day they were there observing that, somebody was using a ATV or snowmobile to gain access from the lake at that location. So it is serving a valid purpose.
Now that I know about it, I might too.
And bring your friends.
Bring your friends.
I have some questions before I make my comment, but, okay, first of all, it's a sixteen and a half foot wide, unpaved, and, you know, it's low maintenance or no maintenance, whatever, road. Where does the right of way end on that? Is it exact 16 feet, or does it go then beyond the 16 feet?
Well, as platted, it's 16 and a half feet wide. I mean, that's what it shows on the plat.
Yeah.
And there is a gravel road of sorts that goes down to the lake.
Yeah. But like a lot of the roads, the city has a right of way of like, what is it, 10 feet or something on the other side of it as well?
We have roads with 66 feet of right of way. We have roads with...
What's this one?
This one's 16.
Sixteen and a half feet wide.
Yeah. The other property goes right up to the edge of it, and that's it.
Correct.
Okay. What is the setback? I see there's a garage over there.
The setback should have been whatever a normal setback would be from the right of way.
And from the map, it doesn't look like it is?
We have lots of setbacks that don't match it.
What came first, the road or the garage?
I can't answer that, but I can tell you that it's probably grandfathered in.
Okay. Otherwise, they can move it. I mean, if it's not within the setback, they may have opened a can of worms here.
I'm not sure how to answer your question. I mean, we've got a lot of properties that were built prior to the zoning ordinance, and they don't meet setbacks. I mean, for instance, Timberline...
That's what's asking, what came first?
Well, and I don't know if I know the answer, but I mean, Timberline Point, for instance, has got garages that are on top of the right of way. I mean, right on the right of way, and that's not the only place in town. There's a number of those places.
Okay. And if we do vacate this property, each side gets a half of the road?
If it were a plat, or if it were a road in the middle of a plat, it would be split down the middle, and each side would get half. This is on the edge of the plat of the Valley of Contentment, so it would all go to the property owner in the Valley of Contentment.
To carry on then from the DNR's question, is it the value of the land versus the benefit to the city didn't seem to be comparable? What approximate, what would you, how would you put a value on that land?
I wouldn't be, that's the job of the assessor, the county assessor, and he would have to do that.
Because it's only 16 feet wide and...
Well, it's 16 feet of shoreline, though.
Yeah. But I looked at it, I says, if that little 16-foot width was worth, say, $10,000, the city tax on that would be about $42, and per resident, it would save the residents something a little less than two cents apiece. So I mean, if they tried to see what is the benefit to the city, I was hoping they were going to come here today. I was curious as to how there's any benefit to the city by abandoning that property.
The public hearing is at the city council. By law, it has to be there.
Yeah.
And so the planning, or the council had asked you for your recommendation, and so it was not their forum at this point to do that.
They didn't choose to try to sway us one way or the other for a recommendation?
They weren't even invited.
Okay. Well, I'm going to go along with Roger and say, I don't think there's any way any help benefits the city.
I'm not sure if all... Okay. Deny because?
Because there's no benefit at all to the city.
Oh, to vacate?
Yeah.
Okay.
To vacate. Or if it is, it's so minimal, it doesn't, we've already spent more time on it than any benefit we'd get by an additional tax by taxing the two property owners that are going to get it.
It's only one property owner.
One guy owns both sides?
No, no. One guy gets all of the property.
Oh, they don't each get half?
No, because it's part of the plat of the Valley of Contentment. It all goes to that side of the plat.
Whatever. Same conclusion.
So no benefit to vacate. That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
Carol?
Well, I would say the same thing. There's no benefit to the city, and in the DNR letter, it says, "The road provides multimodal access to the public waters."
Meeting walkers, or snowmobiles, or four-wheelers, or whatever, which...
Are walking or...
Yeah, obviously, you take away citizens' right to get the Lake Osmond Key from that location.
And you take a canoe down there?
Or canoe order, yeah.
Okay.
That's the reason the homeowner brought it up too, wasn't it? Because a guy supposedly had a dock there or something?
That's his problem, that's not the city's.
Yeah.
And if you look at the survey, the dock wasn't at the end of the right of way.
Oh.
Will this letter from the DNR be at the May 1st meeting?
Yes, and that DNR representative is intending to be here as well. Joe, your comments?
My, I'm in agreement with the position that the regional director of the DNR has taken.
Okay, so what we've got is Peggy states there's no benefit to the citizens to remove a public access.
And Carol's point about it not only is not a benefit to us, but it takes away citizens' rights to be able to use that access.
Okay, Roger stated that there's no benefit, oh, no benefit to giving it up, don't want, yeah, is that right? Don't want to give it up?
It's hard to give it up here, you can't get it back.
Okay.
I mean, don't want to sell it.
Well, that's all right. I'm trying to paraphrase so I can put it in the resolution accurately.
Well, how did the city get it?
It was platted. When the plat of the Valley of Contentment was platted, they platted that access point.
Stupid question, why would they do that?
Well, actually, I think anytime there's a plat, or there's new lots and blocks being made, there's roadways and parks sometimes, and right of ways that are dedicated to the public. Typically, in the old plats, they ran the, one of the right of ways right down the property line, so that if the next guy came along, in this case, the guy to the west, he could add another 16-foot to it, and it would be like a 33-foot right of way. They did that anticipation of the neighbor plating down the line sometimes. Today, we probably wouldn't accept that. We'd probably require at least 33 and/or the whole right of way if something like that were to happen.
A lot of times, too, they would plat those for fire lanes, for access, for drafting water, especially in the older plats. I know Big Lake's got a whole bunch of them, City of Big Lake, and they were platted for fire lanes.
I can see it, but not going to the water, I just...
Yep.
That lot to the west looks like a big lot. Is there a house on that?
Yes. They're part of the petition.
Oh, are they?
Yep.
Liz Wagner?
Okay, so then Larry stated to deny it based on no benefit to the city, take away the public's right to access. Carol said no benefit to the city to vacate as it takes away multiple access to the public to have it for canoeers, walkers, et cetera. Did you say snowmobiles? I didn't hear that.
No, I was pretty much paraphrasing.
Oh, you were going off the DNR.
Multiple access, as opposed to removing them all.
Yeah. All right. And then, Joe, you were in agreement with the DNR statements.
Yeah, specifically, there must be a public benefit to the vacation of the road in, and I can't think of a public benefit.
Other than the two cents of property tax reduction for everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, that's phenomenal.
That's a good point. Okay.
But I would assume the public benefit includes citizens beyond tax-paying members of Breezy Point.
But only the Breezy Point tax-paying members would get the benefit if the tax were to go down by somebody else paying that tax. But everybody have the access.
So limited tax benefit to vacating. Okay. Anything else?
Anything else?
Do we need to vote into, or have you just got it pretty much from our comments?
Yes, I do need your vote, and you're going to adopt resolution PC 1703 with the conditions that you stated.
Would entertain that motion.
I will make a motion that we not recommend approval of the vacation of that parcel of land.
Oh, is there a, oh, okay. 1703 is, 1703 is against it, is that correct?
It is. It is an either-or scenario.
Oh.
I didn't know, I mean...
Yeah.
I need to keep it neutral until we decide.
So the motion is a motion...
It was a base to deny the vacation based on the findings discussed.
We have a motion, right?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion of that motion. It appears as though opinion is unanimous.
Yes.
It goes to the city council and then...
As a recommendation. They have the final say. It's just our recommendation.
Right.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote is the same. Motion passed. Other?
I don't have anything.
Would you mind if I asked if there's been any progress on the development of North Shore by your eyes? Yeah, by our eyes.
Are you talking about the one at the corner, or Weaver Point Road and North Shore Drive?
Yes.
I can tell you that we have not seen anything. I think there were surveyors out there within the last two weeks.
Therefore, how many are they?
I think they were trying to determine ways to get sewer from one end of it to the other, and other than that, we haven't seen anything. I have talked to the surveyor a couple of times, that's all. That's all the activity that's been there. There've been surveyors out there. Where they're at in that whole process, I can't tell you.
My question is probably very premature, but I'm aware that there is some concern by residents of Weaver's Point that they will be required to connect to city sewer.
There'll be no mandate at this time. PCA comes in and says, "You're polluting the waters, you're polluting the groundwater," whatever, there will be a mandate at that point. Or if there's a petition, or some other issue comes up, then there might be that instance. To serve the whole thing will require a list station. It's not a simple task.
If I might say that we, in our initial conversations, we told them that we would like this sewer to be extended to the west end of the property, so that if and when there is an extension that's merited, we have an access to it over there rather than going all the way back to Lake Shore Drive. I think we were trying to be proactive in this whole deal. We were not trying to say, hey, your septic's are bad, you got to hook up at all, but we're anticipating the future. And we're doing the same thing with the resort on their proposed convenience store piece of property. We would like that extended as far to the south as we possibly can get it, so that if in fact it's warranted to extend it further to the south in the future, we have access to it. It's very hard to go through some of those existing subdivisions and reacquire easements in those type of situations when we have the tools to get it today.
Am I correct that there is a portion of Weaver's Point in Pelican Township?
The very northeast corner of it, probably. Anything around Cree Bay is basically in Pelican Township, but Weaver's Point is in the city.
Yes, okay.
The point that goes out into like, that's in the city, but if you go further to the northeast, you'd be getting to Cree Bay, and Cree Bay is out in Pelican Township.
I think Tracy's property is in, not in Breezy Point.
His lake property is in Breezy Point.
I think that's about the...
It's near the line, yeah.
One of the things the surveyors did was find that section line and put ribbons through the trees, and so I, and those ribbons go basically northeast to southwest in my approximation. The city's boundary must go down essentially Weaver's Point Road, or very, I'm in the city, so I'm on the northeast side of the road, so it obviously has to be a little further. I was just trying to figure out, I think you can see on that map right there.
Joe, if you see the yellow boundary?
Okay.
Going kind of north-south, that's the boundary. That's Pelican Township in the yellow.
Yeah. And they put ribbons in the trees, and you guys probably can't see way over there, but through this, I was just wondering where the city's probably was, but it kind of jogs in there.
Yep.
I do see that the entire, all of the residents of Weaver's Point are in the city.
Yeah, okay. I think the island that's out there is actually the part of it is here.
Half and half, yeah. Part of it's in Pelican, part of it's in the city.
So can I?
Gooseberry Island, or whatever it's called.
Can I quote you about the fact that there is no intent?
We haven't even talked about that.
Yeah. No, I know.
One of the things we did, Joe, was when we had some initial conversations with the developer and the surveyor, is that we advised them that it would be a good idea to meet with the neighbors before they did anything that was going to cause a bunch of rumors, and it's, I think it's their intent to continue with that.
They haven't yet.
No, they haven't yet, nor have they showed us anything.
Right.
I mean, it's hard to say we're going to do something or not show what.
Yeah, exactly.
I...
I think the surveyors have really got people's attention now.
Because they're visible.
Well, they might have assumed that there was some property lines, some places that there really aren't too.
Exactly.
So is this the property?
Yes.
Always the case.
We...
For sale signs along that, right?
We did suggest that they talk to Joanne, and we also suggested they talk to Jeff Smith. Jeff was in three weeks ago. I talked to him, well, Jerry did too, and said, "Have they talked to you?" And he said, "No," and we told him what's up, and he knows what's happening. You know, he reminded us that the road is private, and we knew that, and, you know, we had reminded the developer that was the case as well.
We're just trying to protect the future.
Exactly. To me, that makes a whole lot of sense.
Well, it makes sense to us too, but...
I can't imagine us being interested in doing anything other than having sewer extended to the end of that.
Well, I think eventually, you know, nothing stays the same as it is, and eventually, it's probably going to be necessary.
Thank you.
Another just tidbit for you before we move off of other. I did talk to the, oh, God, what's his name? Landwehr, David Landwehr, about the Deacon's Lodge expansion, and reminded him that he needs to renew the conditional use permit before it expires in one year. They can renew it once, and after that, they have to start over. The discussion I got out of him was that Bob had priced out those units, they were over $400,000 apiece, and decided to just stop.
And is the resort still talking about developing up at Ranch Ed and...
Yes, yes.
It's probably a 2018 project rather than 2017.
They approached the, well, they didn't. WSN approached the council about the possibility of... WSN approached the council about the possibility of bidding on that project for engineering services at the last council meeting. So, apparently, the resort is seeking bids from engineers.
There's, there's also been some conversations with the county about access.
Because they wanted...
We haven't really seen anything either.
Because they want it on 11 and the county wants it on Ranchette.
Yeah, they don't want to give access off of County 11. They recognize that we still have to use Ranchette, but they want to write in right out there.
Some interesting things coming up.
Maybe it's kind of the business though, you sit there and you wait for them to happen and happen and happen, nothing happens and then poof, one day it just, and it becomes a hurry up and let's get it done yesterday.
One other other before we end the meeting.
Lombo would say, yeah, one more thing. That joint meeting, you want to kind of give us a little, what do you know more about that?
You know about as much as I know. Tom's going to, got the agenda. He's going to provide us with roles and responsibilities and something else at the meeting. I, my feeling is that it's kind of preparatory to the comp plan, get us to start thinking about what do we want in two years to be in the plan. So, now...
Out of curiosity, from the last comp plan that we did, I don't know, how many years ago was it, eight, something, seven?
Well, the 2010 copy?
Any positive ever coming of that?
We got a lot accomplished from there.
But I mean, stuff that we wouldn't have got accomplished maybe anyway, because we did a lot of the updates of the regulations and so on, but...
Well, we changed zoning, we, we changed the ordinances. I think we accomplished most of the goals that were in there, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Comp plans usually identify things to be done in the future and/or proposed to be done in the future. And some of that was done. We did, last year though, we spent some time doing a update of the existing one to just reflect some of the changes that were made.
I can give you the question though of being, do we, as Peggy was saying, do we need to hire a professional to do it again?
We have talked to a professional that will help us in two, in two years. She works for NJPA, used to work for SEH doing comprehensive plans. She's currently working on NISWA's comprehensive plan. It's not like something we haven't talked about. So...
I assume that'll be something that comes up out of the joint meeting as well.
I would...
This is going to be the comp plan.
I would assume Tom will bring it up, but I'm not really sure what his complete agenda is.
But we can assume it's a discussion of process, right?
Pretty much a discussion of process. You know, it'll be what it is. I'm really not clear about what Tom specifically has in mind. In the last other, hopefully, I had a pre-construction meeting today at the county. They're going to do a mill and overlay in here on the, on the county road and some reconstruction activities. Some of the saw spots around the curves and stuff will be ripped up and redone. That'll start on, well, they anticipate starting at the end of April, the 30th, that week, and be done the second week or first week in June. The, at Weaver's Point and Ski Shalay, there'll be a right turn lane installed and then there'll be a bypass lane at Bushman Road and County Road 39.
All of those are very much needed.
Yep.
It's not going to screw up airport days.
So, thinking the same thing.
Who knows? We had a little discussion about not being, having things ripped up during fishing opener too, so...
Yeah, you can get the landing then. Well, I suppose you could.
I'm a little surprised they're going to re-mill it. It doesn't seem that road, like that road is in that bad a shape.
Yeah, I don't know. The mill and overlay is where the curbs are, so they, you know, keep the same elevation based on the curb lines. But the rest of it, I think, is just being overlaid, except for the few areas that they reconstruct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, usually when they do that, that, that's not extremely destructive?
No, no. There may be some times when, you know, they have to have a pilot car in one-lane traffic and that kind of stuff, but...
When they're laying tar and so forth, yeah.
But they anticipate a pretty speedy project. Anderson Brothers will be doing it.
And when they do that, they usually don't go right down to gravel, do they?
No, no, typically not. Well, you can't on a mill and overlay now.
Yeah, they do.
Really? I've never seen them do that, but...
Seems like there's always, they leave a couple of inches.
Well, it's, part of it too depends on what kind of base you have as well.
Sure.
Yeah.
Anything else that anyone has to discuss?
Else's other, yeah.
Okay, we'll open form number two. You can close open form number two. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.
Very good.
Thank you.
Don't do any raking for a while.
Don't do any raking.
Too late.
Yeah, I looked at that.
After.